Okay, we're recording.
Rick? I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Cambridge City Council on September 9th, 7:00 PM. No, right there. 7:00 PM here at City Hall, Amy South Superior Street. We'll begin with a pleasurable allegiance. If Del Ray could lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to...
I have a question on the bills. On page two, that DEQ fee, is that the same thing that was on last one?
No, no.
That's dues and subscriptions. That's our annual assessment.
That's what they make us pay every month for having a public water system.
Oh, okay.
Well, not every month, every year.
Or every year, sorry, yeah.
It's just an annual charge.
I'll make a motion to approve the current agenda, approve the minutes of the publicly carrying regular meeting of August 12th, 2024, and approve payments of the bills.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Robert?
Just a status report for September 9th of this year.
Thank you.
My items for these, I think I'll start on page six. Item strategic initiative program, item number, item number 11 and 12. So on the commercial student improvements, we got number 11, ongoing construction and review and admin consisting of submittals, construction reservation, and construction. Item number 12, eco-submitted AP payment application number two, last Friday, September 6th. Next item is on page eight, waste water system, I see this permanent stuff, information. Item number 41, HECO received DEQ comments on September 4th for the INI study and waste water facility plan, new alternatives. There was minor comments, so HECO's item turned this around this month. And I'm more pro on both reports, the INI study and the new alternative plan. Once we submit them, we'll copy the city. I think that should be the final final back to DEQ. It's all I have to do.
Question for you on that. Does the council need to approve the facility plan after you guys do the revisions before we send it to DEQ?
If you'd like to, I mean, the city already reviewed it last time. It was copied with the new alternatives for the Sager system and/or the outfall. That remains the same. Comments from their clarifications, like DEU and other related information, nothing
Nothing major.
Major that said, oh, and if there are, we'll let you know. We're in the works, something will get it, kind of get it out this month.
Okay.
Same for the INI. Overall, they were pretty minimal comment, minor comments, clarification.
Okay, any other questions for Robert? Thank you, Robert. Item three, compliance solutions and construction LLC change order number two.
Why is that me? Why is that me? I didn't get it in time. So we didn't get a change order in enough time for HECO to review it and submit it. The change order would, is supposed to include West Holler Street and the needed valve, valve can replacements. But there's also going to be an additional for a soft spot that was uncovered down there in front of the fire department. Don't have a number on that yet because they're still, either they're, they got it taken care of today or they might have to do more excavation. I just don't know yet. Hopefully, we'll have a better idea tomorrow when the project manager's up here to either confirm or deny if they got it figured out.
Which, which brings us to, we'll probably have to have a special meeting next Monday.
That's what I was going to suggest, but we will need a motion on that if they would. Unless we want to just say the mayor calls it, either way. But we can't wait too long to do it because they're going to need to know whether to do that other street or not. And I was mentioning to the mayor a little bit earlier, as far as the funding and stuff, we were trying to figure out whether we could do that whole section of Holler that we had hoped to or not. That, and we don't know exactly how much this soft spot change order is going to be. We'd be a little bit over right now at about $9,400 because we did do the co-op sidewalk and the thing at the museum. So we used some grant money for those things. So we would be a little bit over what we have, but since we got the grant funds early and I've had it invested, I've made over $20,000 in interest that we have some money to be able to cover additional if that's what you'd like to use it for. So that's what we'd be talking about at the special meeting on Monday.
So as soon as we get some numbers and figure out whatever, we'll probably just have to call the meeting once we know that we can have a meeting.
Well, they plan on having those numbers by then, or at least the change order for the cans in the street, even if we have to do the soft spot later.
As far as West Holler Street, I did measure 150 feet down, which brings it to about, I'd say 10 or 12 feet shy of the intersection where it meets Jennifer Street. I think that's better than having it right up there because could eventually have more problems, you know? People coming right out of there off of Jennifer and hitting that asphalt edge.
So it doesn't go across the alley though, does it?
It does. So basically 150 feet is on the backside of the alley. So it encompasses the alley, the backside that stops right there at the back.
So do we set up, ask for a special motion?
If you'd like, if you would like to make a motion for a special meeting on Monday, that would be okay.
I'll make a motion to hold a special meeting, 7 o'clock next Monday. I don't know what day that is.
16.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, resolution on banking agreement with Rogue Credit Union.
I'll, I'll kind of start by just kind of explaining who I am. I'm Katie Preacher. I've been with Rogue now for almost eight years and I'm a business relationship manager for our region, which is the Western Treasure Valley. Kind of how we got here is Jean had been into the Payette branch and kind of talked about your guys' need for a financial institution. And that led to a meeting with Sandra, myself, and Chris, and who was there. And then my manager Dana, she's our commercial team lead for our department. Although I'm not, myself or Dana aren't really the ones to navigate the conversation as to what it looks like to have a physical brick and mortar in the city. We did kind of pass the baton off to our senior VP, who is over our marketing and facilities department. And I kind of mentioned to Sandra that, you know, if we were to come up here, there would kind of need to be some give and take as to what that will look like and putting in kind of like an express teller machine or something of that nature. I mean, it maybe sounds like we're not quite to that point yet, but certainly with the growth that you guys see coming in with the lines and all that, that could certainly change down the road in regards to brick and mortar and having an institution up here. In that same conversation, we had kind of talked about what it would look like if the city itself wanted to look at opportunities that Rogue has to offer. And I kind of gave all of you a little bit of a brochure, if you will, that kind of goes over just a little bit of what business membership is with Rogue Credit Union. And I'm not sure if we want to go into like specifics of the particular opportunities that I was kind of able to create and some of the special pricing that we had offered to Sandra and the city itself as to what that will look like. But I'm certainly open for if you guys have any questions or if you have anything in mind that you would like to talk about this evening. Well, I kind of had to, leisure to help navigate this conversation.
I put the proposal on your desks tonight. It was under your claims details besides the pamphlet she gave you. And just to let you know, I had this conversation with Rogue because US Bank, where we're at right now, their treasury management and stuff is offsite. You know, I have to go through government banking in Minneapolis. You can't do anything at a local bank. I mean, we can deposit, but that's it. But, you know, some of the fees are quite high and then being able to, you know, get to a bank and stuff is kind of hard. But I checked all of the fees with them and then I also checked fees with Uncoa Bank because we have a local government treasury management person that lives right here in Cambridge and got quotes from them, but their fees were significantly higher than Rogue's too. So I felt especially, one thing that we'd like to do is to get a scanner, be able to scan checks. Corey and I have been making deposits the last few years whenever we go down below on, you know, our own vehicle and time and stuff to do things most of the time. Sometimes it's when he's been discharged and has a vehicle, you know, that's going down. But it's getting hard for us to get things done timely because it kind of varies how often I have to go, you know, type of thing. So anyway, we'd like to get a scanner. They had the best price for a scanner. We have to buy a scanner, but then just a $30 a month fee and then also the possibility. It was a lot cheaper as far as if we want to maybe do direct deposits for payroll type of thing. Plus, there's no fee for statements and no fee for cash and stuff like that. And both of the other banks, there's all of that type of stuff that's figured in.
Yeah, we did do a free, kind of an account analysis, just to do kind of a side-by-side comparison as to what's at US Bank and what it would look like with, you know, kind of similar products in regards to like service fees and all that. And Rogue was able to kind of save you guys in the long run on those fees. Aside from if you did want to set up for the ACH or the Business Remote Deposit Capture, those you would be charged monthly, that 25 minimum for the ACH or the standard 30 for the Business Remote Deposit Capture. But kind of as Sandra has said, with the Business Remote Deposit Capture, the nice thing is, is even though the business or the entity has to purchase that scanner on their own, it's compatible with our system. So you guys would be able to have that scanner essentially like having a branch here at your office. You wouldn't have to come down or go to Payette or whatever location you needed to. You can just scan those checks whenever you receive them and they would go into the account immediately. So that's a nice benefit. Same with the ACH, if you guys do direct deposit for your staff. Up to 25 employees, you can do direct deposit on that and that would be the minimum of $25. The only time you would see that fee increase is if you were to increase your vendor payments or anything like your collections or anything like that, you would see that go up. But just standard 25 employees, you could pay out direct deposit and only pay that $25 a month. And you guys are within our average activity tier, which means there's no fee for any transactions that are over 250. You guys are under that threshold, so you wouldn't see any fee there either.
And one issue we've had is we've kind of felt we've had to go to the branch because we've taken a little bit of cash, but not very much cash. And so like having to get to a branch anyway, which at first I thought we might have to do with Rogue and try to do separate batches. But actually, the treasury management person that, with another bank that's here, told me, she says, why don't you just go to the post office and get a money order and scan it all in? And I hadn't thought about that before. So basically, we wouldn't have to leave City Hall to deposit everything. I mean, I go to the post office daily. So when we needed to get a money order to put the cash through, we could do it that way.
I had to, man, what a great idea.
I don't know if the post office would like it.
Make the post office go to the bank.
And just kind of to add in there, I definitely don't want anyone to feel like you have to make a decision this evening. But by all means, if you want to go that direction, I'm certainly prepared if we wanted to. But kind of as Sandra had mentioned, the nice piece about having the account with Rogue is that you have direct access to me and all of our branches and our staff. The nice thing with having me as your relationship manager would be that you guys would have all of my contact information. So if, you know, there's things that come up, like you have goals that you want to meet or you have a project that's coming up and we want to maybe set goals for that. You know, that's what I'm there for, is to help you kind of maximize your funds the best that we can and help you leverage that.
And another thing that's different than either of the other two banks is on the checking plus, there is a little, it is earning a little bit. It's not a lot of money, but we're earning nothing on it right now when it's in there. I mean, I keep the majority of things invested, but I still have to have money in there to pay bills and different things at different times. So that's one advantage too.
Yeah, we came in with some of the exception on pricing is on the business moneymaker. And we priced it as a nonprofit moneymaker. So our nonprofit moneymakers right now are earning at 3% dividend rate on 150,000 or more. And we priced it, if you guys wanted to move forward and have a money market with that minimum 150,000 in there, we would price it at that 3% and then I would just review it annually because it would have to match our nonprofit rate. That if those rates were to go down, that money, your business moneymaker would have to match wherever that rate is at. And that's significantly higher than what just the traditional business moneymaker is at. It's currently at 1%. And in your packets, I included a fee schedule just so you could kind of see that comparison and different things of that nature as well.
Any questions?
And so I did prepare a resolution. I asked AIC for some guidance on it. What was required to put in the resolution and that should have been in your packet. I don't know if you're ready to go to that point or not, but one thing to note right now on signatories, there's just the mayor, council president, myself, and I did add our deputy clerk to that. So if, like both the mayor and I are going to be gone next month, that there'd still be two signers because we do require two signers on our account.
Something that I kind of wanted to add to that is with Rogue, we have what's called ESI coverage insurance and that's essentially just making sure that your funds are insured. Typically, funds are insured up to that $230,000 threshold. Because we take on the, that extra coverage so that businesses and municipalities don't have to, your guys' funds are actually insured up to $2 million. And that's in the hopes that if you guys receive grants or any project funding, that hopefully that amount can help cover whatever it is that you receive so that we guys don't have to go out and shop for another financial institution to have those funds covered.
Is that the same as like FDIC insured, like banks have? Is it the same insurance from the government or?
Yeah, we're NCUA because we're a credit union. And so everyone has that 250,000, but nonprofits and municipalities or government funds have that ESI coverage. Our nonprofits are covered up to a million and like you said, municipality or government funds are covered up to 2 million. So a nice perk to have if you basically audited statements that everything's covered.
Anyway, this is what Sandra's come up with. We've been shopping around trying to figure out how we can save money with our banking, how to make our banking more efficient, and this is what we've come up with, so.
Seems to have lost the bank. This is probably our best option.
And I know that we're an hour away, but like I said, I'm hoping that, you know, as we develop a relationship that, you know, things happen and like I said, you have projects that come up and we want to know how, like I said, we can maximize funds the best that we can. You know, I'm able to come up and attend meetings or have a conversation or do a virtual meeting on just kind of what the options are and what we can do to help you guys out the best we can.
So the closest office is Ontario?
It would be Payette. Oh, that's just where I'm located at, so, yeah, but I can travel wherever.
And Katie's been right on top of things. She promised me one thing here a few weeks ago. She'd have it to me by Friday and she made sure, even though she didn't have the information of the weekend, that she got it to me and stuff before I was back on Monday, so I was really impressed.
Oh, thank you. I do try hard. Sometimes I promise one thing and it turns out the day just gets crazy. But I at least try to get at least something out to do that I haven't forgotten about yet. It's still on top of mind, but may have to tweak the timeframe a little bit, but typically that doesn't happen.
Well, I guess if everybody's good, I'll start the process. Make a motion to introduce and read Resolution Number 2-2024 by title only, under suspension of rules and regulations.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Resolution designating Rogue Credit Union as a depository for municipal funds of the city of Cambridge. That's the end of that title, isn't it?
You just forgot Idaho.
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2-2024 under suspension of rules and regulations on one reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt?
Aye.
Well, I, I will stay until the end because we will, in the meeting minutes, want to list out the type of accounts we want to open. And then I'll need to gather the signers and ID and information so that when I get back, I can give it to my team and they can get the account opened and jockey sign, document, and deliver to you guys. So unless we want to do that now or we can wait till everything's finished.
It shouldn't be too long. If you've got a few minutes?
Yes, I can hear that.
Yeah, we should. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Item five, mayoral nomination for appointment of a city civil attorney. In the last few months, both our attorneys, both civilly and criminally, have given us the boot. Well, not really given us the boot, but they have changed their practices and they've moved on to other things. And so we've been in a quest to find new representation. That's the correct word I was looking for, representation. As far as a civil attorney, you've seen, it was in your packets about Reese Rizik, Rizik is how you say his name. He is currently the city attorney for the city Weezer. We felt that Nan and Sandra and I went down and had a interview with him. And my thought is that he would be a great asset to us as we work with the county. The city of Weezer is working with the county and we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel with a different attorney. He's going to know what's going on between Weezer and the county. He's going to know what's going on between us and the county. And, and I think it will, in the end, I think it'll save us some expenses because he'll doing things for both cities and I think it'll be very reasonable for us to have him represent us. But anyway, we went and spoke with him and he was very enthusiastic to represent us. He's very knowledgeable on city government. He served as a county commissioner for Payette County and also for Fruitland City Council. And so he's very familiar with what we do and how we do it. And anyway, very impressed with him. So Steve, Steve is no longer able to represent us with his changes and what's going on with his practice. And so this is the best candidate that we felt that we could come up with. So.
Make a motion to appoint Reese Rizik as our city's new attorney.
Yeah.
Second.
Second by Levi? Yeah, for civil representation.
And an attorney's an appointed position. So could you include the wording into appoint?
Redo the motion, motion to appoint. Or is it to have the mayor appoint?
No. The council has to ratify his nomination.
Make a motion to appoint Reese Rizik as our civil attorney.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
I need a roll call vote on that one.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Platt? And just to let you know, on a vote of the council for an appointment, if there would have been a tie, the mayor is not allowed to break the tie. Idaho code right here.
I don't have any power at all. What a bum. Don't whine.
Say, shoot, we'll let you off the hook.
Yeah. Okay, item six, attorney appointment for our criminal attorney to represent us. Are we, in, well, currently, we have been using the prosecuting attorney out of Payette. They recently sent me a letter saying that as of October, they're no longer going to be able to represent us criminally. And that includes things like bar fights and things like that, you know? And so those happen on occasion. And so we contacted Walker Law offices out of Weezer. I talked with Dalton previously. His, who's with Josh? Josh Dalton was currently with, or was in the past with the Payette District Attorney and he did all of our work for us and he is now in the Walker Law offices with Dalton. And I would imagine we will see him handling a fair amount of our cases again. Anyway, we reached out to them and they expressed interest in representing us criminally. I think it's a good fit. They're right in Weezer. They're right where our courthouse is. They don't have to travel. It's just right on their beat and so they can represent us more efficiently than Payette could, so. So we felt that was a good fit for us too, so.
And one thing, besides just the bar fight type things and things that come up, Josh Dalton is the one that handled our case on the horses, which had quite a bit of stuff that went along with it and had a successful outcome, so just to let you know that.
So I nominate Walker Law, Walker Law Officers to represent us criminally. So we're both having a problem.
Hasn't been first yet.
You said you, you, you recommend.
I just nominated. That's my job. Yeah, I don't have any power.
I just nominate.
Okay.
You just kicked butt.
Make a motion to approve.
According to Robert.
Point.
I move that we.
Appoint.
Contact the Walker Law Office.
No, we've already done that.
We appoint Walker Law Officers.
Yeah, appoint them as our city criminal attorney.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Platt.
Aye.
Okay, Sandra, item seven, Report on Black Mountain Software Billing Document Specialists' Bank Reconciliation Issues.
I mean, report on the nightmare that's been going on.
Yeah.
Ever since about March, I haven't been able to balance bank statements, and that's never happened in the eighteen years that I've been here. And kept letting it go and thought surely we'll be able to figure it out somehow. And so I finally contacted Black Mountain about it, and I sent them all the stuff that I had and all the stuff that BDS, which is, was our vendor for utility payments, everything I could beg from them to get, because they didn't have any reports available much, but I begged them for some extra reports. And so Black Mountain went with, through them, and they're all CPAs and whatever type of thing, and they said, you're right, I think I put the deal in the, your packet maybe. Oh, no, that's weird. And the guy from Black Mountain said, I spent quite a lot of time and I'm running into the same roadblocks you're running into. I printed all of your statements and monthly BDS documents and agree it's difficult to decipher it all. Maybe best just to balance everything you can and add the positive or negative BDS amount to your adjustment table and move on. Hopefully your experience with BMS Pay will simplify all this with real-time posting. Because we've recently, and BDS didn't tell us, we were, you know, we were, I was so frustrated, I was in the process of trying to find another vendor, we found out Black Mountain actually had come up with its own application and stuff. They were the ones that actually originally had suggested BDS, but I think they knew that a lot of places were having problems. So I was looking into BMS Pay and found out BDS, we were on an old system, and the manager that we had was supposed to tell us that it was going to be discontinued by the end of June, but didn't tell us. Anyway, it's kind of just been a nightmare. And so I asked the auditor actually about if he was in agreement to be able to do that, and he said yes, and talked to me a little bit about the JVs that he would want done, and we were going to do it under an unknown balance, which it's not that big of an unknown balance at the time. But in the last week or so, Brandy decided that, you know, we just shouldn't let this go. So she's been hounding one of the main guys at BDS, and he finally sent her some more reports, and we've spent quite a bit of time, but we've been going through it, and we actually have everything balanced properly till June. We haven't got July figured out in August, so I haven't made those adjustments yet. Originally, I was going to tell you that I was wanting to make those adjustments as of what the auditor told me, but with these new reports that they finally have given us, we've figured out a few more things. So we hope to figure out everything, but I don't know if, you know, that'll happen or not. If not, then we'll have to do those adjustments. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. Anyway, the mayor knows it's been a nightmare.
It's been a nightmare.
And he's known all along we've been out of balance. I told him. I told him I was losing my mind.
So, anyway, hopefully we're well on our way to having that correct for their new system. Okay, item eight, Report on Painting Fire Hydrants and Curbs. Sandra.
Well, actually, since you were involved, I'll let you report on that if you would.
Well, Sandra and I and a bunch of other people that volunteered took a bunch of eight to eleven-year-olds, and we painted the rest of the fire hydrants that didn't get painted last year. And so everything is all painted because you don't have to be a very good painter to paint. That's why the little kids could help us. We painted all the bullards around them, and we painted bullards in front of the generators at the lift stations, and so we're all complete. And then dawned off, volunteered to paint all the red curbs where there's no parking in the city, and Saturday, he and his son painted all those curbs again. And so all those are all painted. And it's kind of interesting, Brandon, I don't know how old he is, is he forty now, forty-something? He originally painted those curbs for his Eagle Scout project when he was eighteen, and he came back to touch them up a little bit.
Been a few years.
So anyway, the Da family has done a lot in helping us keep things painted. So.
I understand, right near the fire hydrant.
You didn't have to do it.
Did you see the one in front of your house?
I did. I helped with that one.
Yeah, I understand there was a nest you had.
Yeah, there was a hornet's nest right on home.
Yeah, I didn't get all the groups in those pictures, that there's four of the different groups that he had out.
Where was it going?
It was over by my place.
Okay, item nine, ICRMP Insurance Policy Changes.
Okay, fun one. Let's see. They're hiding that. Okay, in your packets, I put ICRMP policy, kind of a summary that they kind of give. One of the things on the first page of the summary, it talks about after September eleventh, ICRMP is required to offer complete terrorism property to its members, and this is our formal notice, it's required by federal law, that there's not an additional premium for the coverage. And then the rest of that packet, and this is the one I'm looking at, Jane, right here to start with. And then it goes into, and it gives all your deductibles and different things, and some of them have changed and some haven't type of thing. Like for automobiles, the first fifteen hundred is covered for per occurrence, and the first ten thousand is the deductible on damage to buildings and structures and stuff. And like employee dishonesty or loss on premises, that's the five thousand dollar deductible. And it's more than that if you don't call them. Employment Practices liabilities, twenty thousand. So, I don't know if you read through that, I don't know if you have any questions on some of them, but basically this other document I gave you gave, said what is either clarified in our policy this year, what's broadened or what's, has a reduction. And the ones that changed mainly were like on vehicle and mobile equipment, there was a reduction. On hail and pipes and fittings, failure deductible, there is a reduction. Wind and debris removal and ordinances or laws were all reductions. They broadened the newly acquired property, and earthquake and flood was reduced, and the valuation or loss on the roofs was reduced as well, and they clarified that roofs that are more than twenty years old are valued on actual cash basis. Those were kind of the main ones in that part. But, does anyone have any questions?
One thing we've learned over the years as we go to our trainings with ICRMP is if you have a problem, call them first thing. Don't hesitate, call them, because they want to hear from us. And they're, they're a great support mechanism for us. You don't have to try to figure things out because they're right there for us, so.
Well, the premiums are still way cheaper than if we went with private insurance, because we used to be with private insurance, you know. But most all cities and counties are with ICRMP anymore. Very few go private.
Any questions? Everybody loves insurance. Okay, item ten, Area of Impact Discussion.
Okay, on this, I put in your packets Idaho code on areas of impact, seven sixty-five twenty-six, and the law on impact areas has changed as of the last legislative session. I was just going to go over a few things in it before we talk about possible changes in our area of impact. It says, cities should receive notice of and may provide input on applications brought to the county in an area of impact. Cities do not govern or control decisions on those applications. County commissioners make the final determination regarding area of impact boundaries within their county. And an area of impact is where growth and development are expected to occur. Areas of impact should be planned for growth and development and should not be used to stop growth or development that conforms to applicable plans and ordinances. Areas of impact should be established, modified, or confirmed based on the ability and the likelihood of a city or cities to annex land within the area of impact in the near future. Counties and cities shall review their area of impact boundaries at least every five years to determine if the modifications are needed or to confirm the existing ones. The Board of County Commissioners of each county shall adopt in ordinance a map identifying the area of impact within the unincorporated area of the county for each city located in the county. The Board of County Commissioners is not required to receive a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission prior to enacting an ordinance establishing the area of impact. But if you go to the next page on three, it goes in, it just mainly talks about modification or confirmation of an existing area of impact there, and how that's done. But the main changes the legislature made this year is on the following page on four, and in the previous ones, the first three were listed, but now our requirement is areas where municipal or public water and sewer are expected to be provided within five years. And the area of impact shall not exceed the areas that are very likely to be annexed into the city within the next five years. It was just the foreseeable future, or, you know, it just said future, but now they want to define it. Even when we went down and were interviewing the civil attorney and stuff, he talked about, you know, that that's a big change, that, you know, you're really only supposed to be looking at what you're, what's going to happen in the next five years.
We need to redo ours.
Yeah. And then it talks about, on the next page at the top, the county may adopt individual county comprehensive plan and zoning and subdivision ordinance provisions regarding a specific area of impact. So the county can adopt our comprehensive plan, our zoning, our subdivision ordinances. Now, in talking to Bonnie Brent, the administrator for Washington County's planning and zoning, she said we can't put, you know, that, to adopt our ordinances anymore, you're required to put what ordinance is in there, and I'm not exactly sure how that's defined. I know in previous meetings, we talked about going to the county to ask if they would go by our ordinances instead of theirs because of, you know, some of the conflicts we've had. But we can do that, but we'll just have to be more thorough on it. And then it says, if the area of impact has been properly established, this is on K, persons living within the delimited area of impact shall be entitled to representation on the Planning, Zoning, and Planning and Zoning Committees of the city of impact. Substitution representation shall be nearly as possible reflect the proportion of population with the, living within the city as opposed to the population within the area of impact. And so that's one thing is, if we want to go by our ordinances, we would have to establish a Planning and Zoning Committee, because we can't have, right now, the city council, after we got rid of the Planning and Zoning Committee about fifteen years ago, because there wasn't enough stuff to come before, and the council had the right to sit as the Planning and Zoning Committee as well. But if we do this, I mean, they can't serve on the council, so that we would have to have a Planning and Zoning Committee. And then on the last page under six, it says, cities and counties shall review their existing areas of impact and shall reestablish the areas in conformance with the provisions of this section by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Failure to timely conduct such review and reestablishment shall novellify the current area of impact boundaries and require the city and county to go through the process set forth in subsection two of this section. So we have until the end of next year to redo our area of impact with the county. And I've been talking a little bit with the county, not the county commissioners yet, mainly with just planning and zoning, although we've talked to the county commissioners, or at least I have, all of them before, as far as our area of impact and about possibly going by the city ordinance. So I kind of worked up a little map. Another thing that was implemented by the legislature this year was ag banks, and counties are required to have an ordinance by the end of this year, that people can actually put prime farmland into an ag bank for twenty years. And I'm not sure what the county's going to do with that, but you can take it out of the ag bank, too. So, I'm not, but anyway, that protects some of the prime agricultural land if it's in an ag bank.
My thought was with that, if you owned prime ag, it would keep you from being annexed into the city, because you could put it in a bank and protect it, you know, so it wouldn't be the city right then.
So I went through our impact area, which takes in those four sections that we've talked about previously. And at first, I was going to map it out by quarter sections, because then we wouldn't have to include as much prime farmland. But then in reading Idaho Code, they'll only let you do it by parcels. So I kind of have redone it, and so where it's shaded in is what I would propose to be kind of this area of impact. More than likely, is it going to grow in all those places within five years? Probably not, but I don't know which way something would grow. And with the mining possibilities and stuff, I mean, the most logical place would be to grow towards Highway seventy-one, because we have infrastructure right there that could be run to things easily, although there's some prime farmland there, and I don't know whether those, they could ever get something bought that way. So maybe they would have to look at, you know, housing or their mining camp and stuff on Mill Road or something. Or maybe we would have to look on the other side of the river, but we probably could only realistically take infrastructure on the other side of the river if we were able to get a grant to bore under the river.
Or if Maverick came in.
Right. They paid for it in Weezer. So those are the kind of the things, and then, you know, our growth has already started to go out towards the canyon, and so I went a little ways out there, but I tried to not pull in big acreages of farmland. The only one that I really did pull in, because it's a big parcel, I think there was an eighty-acre parcel that Ron Ford owns above Fifth Street. And then there is the acreage that, even though there's some housings on some pieces of it, that Tim Bumgarner owns out north on ninety-five. So, anyway, I know the mayor had asked at our economic task force meeting... So anyway, I know the mayor had asked at our economic task force meeting that the economic task force kind of take a look at this, too, so we could get some more public input, and I thought maybe this would give you guys a starting point as far as the impact area. So you want to take it from there, Mayor?
What are your, I guess we're asking is what are your thoughts? Sandra went to a lot of effort to identify these parcels and shade them, because that's what we're going to have to do. We can't just, we can't just draw a square around it and say, "Okay, there's our impact area," or we can't put a circle around it and say, "Okay, that's our impact area." We can't do that. So you have to identify specifically, and I guess that's what we're talking about when we go to the county and want them to recognize our laws and stuff that we have in our impact area. We have to be very specific with the ordinances that we want them to accept.
And how often can we redo these?
Every five years, you're supposed to redo it.
Well, you have to, but there's actually provisions where, that you have to give notice to renegotiate, which I think you can do yearly.
I was thinking about across the river with the mining, five years. We're not quite going to be there yet, but in five years, maybe we could add that side in.
Yeah, maybe somebody will be talking about it, and we'll go, "Hey, we really need to change that and put that in."
Well, I did put in across the river, just on that one side.
I'm just wondering if it's time yet.
Well, actually, I had this, there are places where we could apply for grants, and I know someone that, you know, there is some property that could be looked at. Whether it's for sale or not, I don't know, but I've given some people some ideas of things they could develop over there, but the thing is, we'd have to have a grant. But there is on the, when you're heading north on the right-hand side there, it's not prime ag. But right now, the city limits is pretty locked in. There's only like three properties that don't have a building on it, you know, that are vacant lots. I mean, there's some properties, bigger properties, that could be divided or type of thing, but other than that, there's only about three places to build in the city.
So what Sandra's tried to do is the main thoroughfare is the main arterials is, that's where development normally will occur, is on your arterials.
And Washington County's plan emphasizes that that's where they want it, on those arterials, so I made sure that we went on.
So you guys see anything on there that isn't appropriate, or something that needs to be added or taken away, or you all think this is the greatest map ever?
Greatest map ever.
Good job, Sandra.
You won the mapper of the year award.
Well, we can make changes and stuff. You might take them home and study it out if there's anything that, you know. And I don't know, you know, this isn't the best map. I can't use Washington County's mapping system like I used to to be able to draw things out, because they have gone with.
Art GIS.
Yeah, Art GIS, and so it's locked into their stuff, and so alls I could do is get a copy of their map and try to do it myself. Eventually, we might have to look into us having some type of mapping thing.
Not with Esri.
No, it would be way too expensive.
Esri's too expensive. It's like $2,500 a year.
But I thought maybe Washington County, because of the new ag bank laws, we can kind of tell them, we took a lot of the prime ag out of it. You know, that's been in the impact area for, you know, 30 years or 50 years, maybe. I don't know how long it's been this way.
Sometimes, something's going to break loose somewhere. We just don't know when and where. It's a huge guessing game. Anyway, we're just trying to be ahead of the curve and be attentive to what's going on.
We need to get this done before the end of next year.
Yeah, I'd like to get it in place sooner than that if we can, and I'd really actually like to work on it maybe by the end of the year, you know, at least get the area of impact established, and then work more on our planning and zoning code. A lot of it is really outdated. But that's kind of up to you, what you guys want to do. But the thing is, when we have to hold the hearings, my personal feeling is that we have to do something, and alls we can say is, "Well, it doesn't fit our code," and we have to put a lot of time and money into everything that happens at those land use hearings. And so if we're not really going to have a say in it, I'm not sure that we really need to hold the hearings.
Any questions?
No. So the procedure to get, to start officially re-adopting or redoing our impact zone, what kind of, how many hearings, how many land use, I mean, what is our procedure going forward from here?
I read it in law somewhere, but I don't remember the details, but it'll have to be done by the county, and they'll be holding hearings and stuff.
Oh, so we don't actually?
I don't think so. I think they actually hold the hearings. Everyone can give input, including the city, but.
So we just propose it to them? So I like your map. I mean, where you're showing potential growth is logical all the way around.
I can show you how to get rid of those dots, too, if you don't want them on there.
Oh, yeah.
Those are all wells.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's interesting.
Those were wells.
All those dots are wells that are in.
I do have one on my property, okay.
Idaho Department of Water Resources.
No, it's collapsed in. I tried sticking a hose down it. It gravelled up 10, 15 feet.
Is there a well at my house? I could have run.
No, I think that's on the, I think that's across the street from you.
I think that's the ITD one. Oh, CTC.
Or ITD. And some of those might not even be active. They're just ones that are listed on the Idaho Department of Water Resources website.
Yeah, the one on mine's not active.
Those are all the legal wells.
Yeah, but we're discouraged from having active wells in the city limits. It's not illegal, but we're to discourage.
We'll just say it's illegal.
Use them for drinks.
Okay, item 11.
Church next to me has one, too, that's pretty smart on.
It's been moved and seconded by Nann. We adjourn. Hold on, favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a good love life.
I got an idea for you, Mayor.
What's that?
We'll buy a thousand acres around here somewhere, and we can put up.